Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining the Lewiston City Council for the December fifteenth workshop and city council meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address. If you join this meeting using any other link, you may have trouble connecting properly. And we encourage you to log out and then rejoin the meeting using the correct website address. Public comments on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lauistonmain.gov. Prior to adjourned the meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make a comment when invited to do so. By raising your hand button in the lower center of their of your screen. Once they are acknowledged, their microphone will be unmuted and they will be invited to make a brief comment. Speakers will also need to be sure to unmute their mics as well before making comments. And counselors are asked to raise their hand as well to make comments. So the workshop session, we only have one item, and that's a presentation by the fire operational and administrative analysis. And it's their final report. So Dennis, do you want to lead into this for us?
Sure, well Dale, Dale brings in our presenter, Tom, from the Center for Public Safety Management. As well as the chief Stockdale as well. What you'll see tonight, council is several months ago, the city contracted with the Center for Public Safety Management. To conduct an operational administrative analysis of our Lewiston Fire Department. Tom, from the, from the, from there will deliver the recommendations. What we're looking for is additional feedback and comments from the council because I've also tasked. The fire chief with developing an implementation, a strategic plan. On how these recommendations would be incorporated or could be incorporated into our Lewiston Fire Department. So what you can anticipate is hearing this report tonight, we'll take the feedback and discussions. And then the chief will work over the next several months to. With the staff over at the fire department and developing this implementation plan and then likely present this back to you. Budget will be coming in around March, April, but shortly either around the towards the end of the budget. We'll be able to come back with this plan and present that and for further discussion about how these recommendations will actually look within the department. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tom from the Center for Public Safety Management.
Okay, thank you, Dennis, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Now let's see the beauties of technology. See if I can get this to work. I think. Good, 2020 will go down as one of the more common languages. Excuse me, you're muted normally is the problem. So let's see. There we go. The Center for Public Safety Management began this process with Lewiston, looking at. The total operations of the fire department and one of the things that we usually. Base our recommendations on our worldwide best practices. Our teams and subject matter experts are drawn from departments around the world, mostly in the U.S. But we have Tony McGurk, who is a former chief of the Mercy Side Fire District in Liverpool, England. Which has been one of the leaders, at least in moving the fire service from one of tradition to one of evidence based and data driven. We also rely on the National Fire Protection Association. The or also known as NFPA. I will be again sitting on the NFPA's seventeen ten committee, which is for career fire service. How to actually create and manage. We also look at the accreditation processes. International Code Council, the ICC, we have an affiliation agreement. Vision twenty twenty, which is a prevention program that actually came out of England, beginning in the year about two thousand, two thousand and one. So they've got about twenty years worth of data that really recognizes. When we have a fire, it's actually a loss for a community. Doesn't matter how small or large, something is going to be lost. And so the the goal of the most fire departments today is moving from one of reaction or waiting for the bell to ring. And rolling out to one of preventing and making sure that we don't have a fire in the first place. Just as a kind of a national example of is that for every one dollar that we spend on prevention. We save about seven dollars on loss and and other costs. So the, 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 really the key to fire departments, fire service today is that prevention aspect. We also work with the International Association of Fire Chiefs and many of their committees. Our seven recommendations, the first thing that we usually hear is, oh, my gosh, we have a ton of things. That's not really, you know, anything to be concerned if about many of our police studies today, at least. Are averaging a hundred to a hundred and thirty recommendations. So, you know, thirty seven recommendations, sounds like a lot. There are some significant areas that we think could be improved, but it's not unusual because we really. Subject your organization to a forensic audit. If you look at every year, the city conducts a financial audit, you look at everything. It's kind of the, I always looked at it when I was a city manager, it was my report card. And it was my finance director's report card each year to the council. Did we do everything to make sure that the dollars coming in that were being spent? Could be accounted for and that there was nothing irregular. The same is true with our studies where we're subjecting your organization to an extremely detailed. Analysis to determine what works, what could work better. Are there areas that that might be improved? And I compliment you and the administration for undertaking this because it is a dawning task. It's a lot of work, there's a lot of recommendations and there's a lot of work to come, but. The goal is is to lead to a better, safer, more efficient, more effective fire service. The one thing that we also bring is that we are, we're coming with any mandates. We're not like OSHA, that if OSHA came in, you'd have, if you had thirty seven recommendations, you'd also. The manager would be sweating right now as with a lot of city staff. Because it's a regulatory body that has legal penalties and it could be extremely expensive for the city as well as punitive. And so where it's not mandates, you're free to amend, you're free to accept. As you get into some of the recommendations, you may say, these could work a little bit better if we do this or that. That's totally to be expected, and that's what we will work with your team. Over the next months and years, as they, you know, seek to to implement many of the recommendations that that we've provided. It's really a strategic process. We're moving from one of tradition, which most fire services in this country are a hundred years of tradition in many cases. And, you know, they are often reluctant to improve, to change, to make amendments. And so this is a strategic process that really sets your organization up short and long term. For better operations for the future. It's department focused. One of the things that we did was to interview and try and meet with as many or all of your employee groups and employees. Either individually, in teams, in focus groups. And we actually had to kind of move some things at the end because of COVID. That kind of reared its head just as we're completing the interviews. So we did some of those virtually, but we tried to get as much feedback and. Opinions and and recommendations from staff as they wanted to put forward. It also revealed one of the weaknesses of your current system. You have a three platoon or three. Squad system and you have Kelly days that create an unusual. Kind of dynamic. In the department, because while we would normally, for instance, just before your project, I was in. Portland, Oregon, they operate with three sis, three squads, but don't have the Kelly days. And over the course of four days, we were able to interview all of their staff. In your case, it was more than a week it took to get to that same level. Where that becomes a problem is when you're trying to provide training, when you're trying to provide consistency, when you're trying to unite a department. If you have to, you know, plan out seven to eight days to just get the basics. That does, that really makes it a much longer process. It causes a lot more problems in scheduling and arranging schedules. And to bring in experts or to sending people away for training, that's a huge time span. The planned presentation, we look at as an opportunity for change. It's really at the organizations, a lot of organizations will embrace this and run. Some organizations will fight it, and that's to be expected. Change is never easy, change is always difficult. And hopefully, what many of the recommendations can end up isn't being incorporated into a strategic plan that. In talking with Dennis and talking with the chief. It's really looking at at creating a plan so that you don't fail in the future. That things don't go by the wayside and that you evolve from a traditionally run department. To one of of dynamic deployment and and really much more. Versatile and and the ability to change with the times. As we've noted, and as we're working across the country and pretty much right now in about ten states. The fire service EMS, all of those emergency services are changing significantly and quickly. We're seeing more change and more things come to the table than probably what we've seen oftentimes in a decade. They're happening in a very short span, so hopefully we're positioning you to be able to come out of this stronger, better. And providing a better service to your customers, the citizens. We talked with the chief and with Dennis. It looks like the the presentation would be at your April budget for strategic planning purposes. And as it moves forward, that you would have other opportunities to speak up, to. Inject change, same thing with the department that everybody has an opportunity. That it's really a more broadly focused versus just a one. Kind of one document sitting on a shelf, but rather it's a living document that really guides the the transition of your department. The other change that we're seeing significantly, especially in EMS. Our insurance requirements, what insurance companies are paying for, how EMS agencies are operating. What we've been seeing lately are most EMS agencies across the country. If they were breaking even or coming close, are suddenly looking at million dollar shortfalls. It's a significant problem because of the 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 calls for service for COVID. The expenses that are being incurred with COVID and how costs have escalated. For instance, just simple masks and gloves have gone up in some cases ten to twenty times. And cost, and when you're using those on every run, you can quickly run up significant bills of hundreds of thousands of dollars. The process we used is pretty standard, it's like an audit. It's very similar, you know, when your auditors come in every year, they don't just come in and say, you know what, I think we're just going to do this. And we're going to just shock the city manager, we're going to change everything up. Rather, they have a process that's followed and for a couple of different reasons. One, so you don't miss something, but more importantly, that we can begin to build data. Sets that we can work with your team. If they want to look at other agencies that are providing like services, like populations, that type of thing that we can begin to to. Develop data sets and and in the fire and EMS service. That is one of the biggest challenges facing the country today. Is that much of the data that is being compiled is often a year old. And so making decisions on data that's more than a year old, if you're making decisions on. Operations based on this year, we're finding things are completely different from from past years. And we aren't really sure what's going to happen next year. It's very likely that through at least June, we're going to see this kind of evolving change taking place. And then after June, hopefully. With the vaccine and other other things coming to market, we'll see more of a normalcy kind of return. But what's going to be normal, that's going to be the big question. We drop, we focus our recommendations and the. Strategies that we recommend on data for a couple of different reasons. And and one of the main ones is it's really hard to change something if you can't measure it. If you're just going to change for the sake of change, is that good or bad? Is it more costly, is it less costly? Does it improve the service to your customers, citizens? And if it doesn't, is it really worth undertaking in the first place? So the the goal is, is that you have something that's measurable, that can be quantified. So that as change takes place, you can begin to get the answers as the elected body. To set policy that that can then be followed by the city. We go to the computer aided dispatch system for the city. And one of the reasons that we do that is that's kind of like the city clerk's minute book. If you want to find out what happened at any minutes of a city council, you go to the minute book. You know, you don't go to the newspaper, you don't go to any of those places because they may or may not cover your your meeting. But the city clerk keeps a detailed set of records going back hundreds of years in some cases. I used to love looking back in some of the the old records because you could find answers to questions we were trying to deal with today. That had been recorded by our clerk, you know, back in the eighteen hundreds. And so we were able to answer questions. And that's why we go to the data system, the official data system for the city. And that's the CAD record system. That that way, going forward, your department will be able to to measure, to analyze, to see if change actually produced the desired results. And we follow that up with the on scene visit, which in this case, we like said, we spent almost a week in your community. Was looking forward to being able to come back in person that I zoom. But, you know, that that's one of the things that we're living with today. But we spent time in your community, walking around, talking to merchants, businesses and different individuals. The synopsis of recommendations are are fairly. Standard in some cases in your department, you do a very good job of firefighting. You have a good firefighting force. They're they're strategically located with stations. But one of the biggest problems that we saw at the start of it. Is the operation model that you've been using is really the traditional industrial model. From the eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. And that's kind of like the pyramid style where a manager is at the top. And it's kind of like the the formal chain of command. The military in many cases follows that that kind of formal command structure, structure where you have a general and. And majors and captains and and so forth. My son happens to be in the army, he's a major. He hates when I use this example, but one of the things that the army's done is they have been training their staff. In the non officer ranks to begin to make decisions. And and so that the organization is much more redundant. It's also much more versatile that if things need to be changed in the field, they can be done. And they don't have to send a form up through the chain of command, get a decision back through the chain of command. But rather, everybody is participating in the decision making of the organization. And what it does is it builds leadership at all levels. And it also makes the, like I say, the organization much more dynamic. Classic example was during nine eleven, when the twin towers fell in New York City. Much the command structure of New York Fire Department was wiped out when those buildings collapsed. But because they had had moved from the traditional model to one of of much more dynamic. You had basically firefighters assuming command that normally would have been deputy chief ever. And because of that, they were able to manage in probably one of the most demanding situations that we've ever seen in the fire service. And so one of the big recommendations is that the organization needs to evolve. It needs to move from that industrial model to one of more of a network talent. Where you're using the talent, you have a lot of younger individuals that are paramedics. That have a lot of training and education that actually are out teaching other fire departments. And yet you're not able to take full advantage of those resources in your own organization. The of the network talented model is that you're you're drawing on that knowledge and experience of even those younger members of the organization. So that everybody benefits, including the citizen on the street, because they're getting a better service that you don't have to recreate. Other staffing changes that we looked at were some administrative assistant changes. Rewriting the job descriptions of the department and realigning the duties. Because right now with the structure, once you eliminated the battalion chiefs on during an past economic downturn. What it's done is created almost a void in in that you have a chief and then down to the captain level. And there's no other management in there for support. And we think that that makes it a fairly thin organization when you really look at. At duties that need to be assigned and making this transition. Rewriting job descriptions, doing risk assessments. Conducting the outreach that we think is necessary to move you from that traditional fire department to one of dynamically deployed. Takes a lot, takes a great deal of effort, and we think this would be a good way to move. One of the other problems that we also saw was information sharing. That we looked at needing more of processes and stuff. The first one was inspection and citation for false alarm calls. You're a beautiful community, an older community, but you end up with a lot of alarms as a result from some of the buildings. Every time those alarms come in, those drop your resources down. The other challenge with a high number of false alarms in organizations is. Employees begin to get. Kind of used to alarms going off at certain locations. And so, okay, it's an alarm at at the building under construction downtown. Perhaps they aren't fully ready to to deploy. And consequently, they take longer or whatever. And so it's important that false alarms are managed, they're followed up. That if there's a violation, that it's a citation or that some way that there's an encouragement that you don't end up with those those false alarms. Looked at the promotional process. That, you know, even younger candidates should be considered, it doesn't need to be just a constant upward movement in the organization. That sometimes it's good to shake things up, get those younger people. Get those people that are coming out with that other experience and knowledge. Into those command positions that they can be fully utilized in an organization. Also moving to more internet based video, when we started making that recommendation. None of us had an idea of what we're going to encounter this year. If you're like me, I know I'm, I will so enjoy not doing Zoom meetings anymore. And doing Zoom training and doing Zoom conferences. They do get a bit much, but they're probably going to be the wave of the future. Short term and maybe even in some long term cases. Because we're finding out that a lot of the the basic knowledge can be dispersed through the internet. As I mentioned earlier, my son is is. Testing right now for a major, he would have had to deploy for six months to another base. And instead they did it all by Zoom meeting. And so even even the army and the military are moving much of their command. Education and and other than the the actual testing is all moving to video based. In the training, we looked at expanding some training requirements. One of the things that we found with your department was unique. You don't do hazmat, you don't do a lot of the things that most modern fire departments that have kind of followed the model established by the International Association of Firefighters. Fire chiefs accreditation and NFPA. Your department doesn't engage in things like hazmat, technical rescue. EMS to some extent and and EMS is one that we see most departments getting much more involved in. And I'll I'll mention, I'll talk about EMS a little bit more later. But again, looking at training and developing promotional kind of almost plans for employees as they come in the department. That when they come in, what is their goal, where are they headed? How can the their training and other education be provided so that they again continue to be a resource and an asset to the department? We looked at the fixed assets. One of the challenges that you do face are older stations, especially in the time of COVID. And in the time that we're going to be going through till we actually see a vaccine. One of the challenges with fire departments is providing separation of equipment, personnel. Different things so that your people are not exposed if something does come into the agency. That's probably going to to outlive the COVID because we don't know what might be next. So positioning as you replace stations, as you remodel stations, that they have things like positive pressure ventilation. That equipment is is separated and that there's a decon area that's separate from living quarters. And that you can keep things out of departments and out of the organization. Because the last thing you want to do, we were just in Billings, Montana. And we actually had to pull part of our team out because they suddenly had twenty four people come down with COVID in their in their department. Based on a exposure at one call. And so those are the things that we've got to be mindful of as we go forward. One of the the areas that we are seeing agencies and cities. Take advantage of is the CARES Act funding. There likely is going to be another round of CARES Act funding. There also is likely to be more money put into the Fire Act, the Assistance to Firefighters Act grants. We don't have dates, we don't have amounts yet, but it's very likely that those amounts are going to be boosted substantially. And so we will keep your your leadership informed of of changes. And when those opportunities come up, because it's going to be kind of a first come, first served. And I suspect there's going to be a great amount of demand for those grants and that type of thing. Also adopting a schedule for replacement of apparatus, your equipment is good. Now it's maintaining that so that you don't fall behind. The transformative issues I mentioned, moving from that typical industrial model to one of a high performing organization. That's going to include reviewing all your policies, procedures, testing processes. All of those things need to be reviewed and updated along with job descriptions, looking at promotions. What is actually identified with the captain, you know, would they heading? What would the assistant chief be providing, making sure all of those things are current? We would mention that there are companies out there that will help you with some of your model policies. There's a firm called Lexipol, police, fire and EMS are actually jumping on that. Because one of their benefits is they have a legal staff that vets the policies, make sure that it is defensible. And they will actually step up and defend the city. And so we're seeing a lot of communities rather than reinventing the wheel, contracting and and doing that type of thing. I mentioned that the transformation of the organization, ultimately that provides for better service. It also provides for a happier workforce. That work, workers and employees feel like they're empowered, that they're having a kind of a. A hand in what's going to be coming out of the organization where it's headed. And that's all important, and I compliment the the city manager and the fire chief. Because even this study, one of their key requests was that we make sure that we got that involvement. That kind of viewpoint of all the employees that there was an opportunity. And that's really a high performing, a mark of a high performing organization. That you're not just going on what comes out in a book, what your neighboring department might be doing. But rather, you're involving the entire organization in the process. Hopefully that improves buy in, it lessens the threat because change is threatening to many people. Hopefully that will enable more people to be involved and more people to feel like they're part of the this and versus being part of the problem. We looked at teams from each of the fire stations. This is in the new NFPA seventeen ten standard is to really move towards. Deploying your resources based on articulated risk assessments. And that risk assessment needs to look at all of the different risks that the community faces. You're very well prepared for fire, but how about flooding events, severe storms? I see that there's a winter storm headed your way, it's either going to hit you and miss us or hit us tomorrow or Wednesday. And miss you, I'm not sure which is going to go, but we're seeing more of those kind of. Winter storms going up the east coast and really hitting a lot of us. And so it's looking at all of the risks facing the city and deploying resources. And more importantly, being flexible that the resources aren't twenty four seven, three sixty five. But do they change during the summer season when tourists are out, festivals are going on, that type of thing? Versus in the middle of winter, there's a a different demand that you're like where I was in Michigan, things freeze up in the winter. And when you're running equipment that's full of water, the last thing you want it to do is freeze up in the middle of winter. It kind of defeats the whole purpose and can damage it. And so having that comprehensive risk assessment, all of the NFPA standards are moving to a deployment model. And they, just as background, the NFPA involves the firefighters union, fire chiefs, city management, mayor's conference. A number of P through the National League of Cities are all involved in many of those standard making processes. And they're based on. Actually now almost twenty years of research that this is really the the model for deploying resources. And so we recommended conducting a formal risk analysis. The other thing that, and I mentioned. The other thing that uh and I mentioned to to uh the city manager and the fire chief. Uh, one of the things that we tell our our uh communities is that while we could do that risk assessment for you, my personal feeling is you want your employees, your firefighters, your command and your chief to do that because it's first off, it gets them out in the buildings in your community so they see those hazards up close. And in many cases, they'll spot things that they may not have known. Uh, I know when we did ours back almost fifteen years ago, we found some manufacturing facilities had some pretty hazardous chemicals that we didn't have a record of. Uh, and so we were able to correct that, we're able to work with them to minimize that. Uh, one particular case was a dry cleaner that caught on fire after I retired. Uh, was after I retired as city manager, but because we had looked at that process, we were able to isolate the the flow and the runoff that was coming from that fire so that it didn't contaminate our waste treatment facility. So again, it involved our wastewater plant, it involved our DPW, it involved our fire department. But they came together to develop that risk assessment so that we could minimize the risk to our overall community and in particular to our responders. One critical area that we found is the dispatch time. Uh, we found that the dispatch time at the ninetieth percentile and and that's uh uh kind of the the process that's used when evaluating uh fire and EMS is that for every ninety call or very every hundred calls, ninety of them should be at a certain level or you get an A grade. The four point six minute dispatch time is about four times higher than the national standard provides for. And that standard has been adopted by NFPA, APCO, which are is the communication office. As an example, if you're having a heart attack, uh if you're having a fire, uh normally flashover occurs anywhere from eight to ten minutes in a fire. Cardiac arrest, uh sudden cardiac arrest, if you haven't uh either uh defibrillated or begun CPR in ten minutes, the chances of survival dropped almost zero. So you've got about a ten minute window that you're working with. If almost five of those are taken up and dispatching instead of one, that doesn't leave a lot for travel time and actually to to involve in the process. So that's a critical point that can be easily improved uh probably with just some simple changes at the dispatch uh by by moving in policy and and when they activate the the uh alert to responders. We know that it's a joint effort, uh but this would also benefit the EMS, it would benefit Auburn and brings you into that national standard. We also looked at uh adopting performance measures across the uh organization that really look at outcomes versus just simple numbers. The four point six minutes is a number. The outcome that you are seeking is that you can find the fire to the room of origin or the point of origin and stop it from spreading throughout the building or to the neighboring buildings or whatever. Or in the case of EMS, that the person is able to get to the hospital with a pulse and leave, that they survive the the instance of cardiac arrest or a be a bleeding issue or whatever, that you get them there in time that they survive. Though and those are the performance outcomes that we look at uh creating for the the organization. We looked at EMS and in uh fair fairly detail uh as much as we could uh because the records are kept at different areas and you don't actually pay currently for EMS, it's provided as a service. Uh, right now, one of the things that we urge communities that we're working with is not to change EMS. Um, because so many things are in flux right now. Uh, we've uh worked with one company that was trying to bid out for a new provider and they got zero bids uh mainly because uh when we surveyed the the companies that were asked to submit bids, they said, we don't know if we can get employees, we don't know if we want to add service, we don't know if we want to take that risk in. Uh, and it's a lot, it's a great deal of work to do in a virtual environment. You really need boots on the ground and so changing EMS at this time is is kind of risky. And so for that reason, uh we look at what are other areas that you could improve in and and it's really developing a closer relationship. Excuse me, with United and moving towards again that that outcome model that are you matching up with national standards? If you're if you are dispatched, are you dispatching only to the cases that really need a first responder or are you dispatching to every call for service? We uh what we've seen across the country is a pretty much a uniform, whether it's a career agency, whether it's a volunteer agency, whether it's combination. Pretty much fire departments used to respond to everything. They wanted to go on every call for service, any call EMS, any call to fire. What we've seen is a complete rethinking of that and saying, do we really need to go out to the person who's been sick for a week? Expose our staff to possibly COVID or whatever, when there are two people that are are, you know, uh outfitted, that have the proper PPE, that have the medical and uh they could handle the case without any other uh involvement. And so we're seeing that change that that first responder is very likely to change in most agencies to being only dispatched when there's a beating, bleeding or breathing problem. Uh, the three Bs as we call them, and it's the serious cases that really need intervention or need more hands uh on deck really to handle the case. And so EMS, that's one major change that's taking place. That will require obviously working with your dispatch, developing protocols, developing when those uh that extra service needs to be. But it minimizes the risk to your agency, to your people uh and ultimately to the community because if they contract the virus and are are actually spreading and maybe are asymptomatic, they could expose others in your community and that's not what you want to happen right now. Uh, and so we looked at that and monitored and working with EMS on response times, everything from dispatch all the way through the system of how things might be improved. And what's the outcome of of everything that's taking place? Um, we did look at they they may be able to take on additional uh responsibilities, especially as COVID comes out, one of the major things, you have a lot of younger folks uh in your agency that have paramedic licenses. One of the changes that we've seen is that Medicaid, Medicare and most insurance companies are now paying for those people to go and provide treatment and not take patients to emergency rooms. Uh, that was, it was kind of in the discussion and there were some uh kind of pilot prod processes across country going on. Today we're seeing that embraced and that's likely to survive COVID. That rather when you call a call for EMS service, that rather than being immediately picked up and taken to an emergency room, you'll uh your emergency responders will log in via computer like we're doing tonight with a doctor uh who will, you know, talk to the patient, the uh the first responders, the firefighters, the paramedics will be taking their blood pressure, doing everything else. They may be prescribed uh uh, you know, treatment by the doctor without ever having to leave their house. Uh, and those are the things that we're seeing across the country uh take place and those are opportunities for your department as it grows and it really improves the service to your your citizens as well as lowers the cost. Um, one of the things that used to be kind of the the block of that where ambulances would be dispatched, they'd go out to the patient. They're running up a bill of about seven hundred fifty dollars. So they would come back, they couldn't bill prior to COVID and so they would be out seven hundred fifty dollars. With the changes that we've seen taking place in Medicaid, Medicare and and private insurance, they are now paid the equivalent of what they would have made on a run. Uh, that's also a way for your department to diversify and in the future make additional revenues for the city. Is that if you're making those runs, you should be reimbursed for your costs. And it's a way to pay for those services moving forward. Uh, we looked at things like even buying EMS supplies with the with the uh ambulance service. A couple of different things, one that makes sure that there's consistency throughout the organization. We've been in departments uh where even defibrillators are different between the first responders and the and the ambulance. The problem is, is you're trying to redo leads and everything else in the middle of a a cardiac event or whatever. That's not really when you want to, you know, kind of throw things up in the air and say, oh, let's let's add a little stress to this uh call for service. You really want it that everything flows and that everything is uniform and that there's a system versus just a lot of components. With that, those are kind of the the thirty thousand foot level recommendations that we had. Uh, they're detailed in uh in the report uh to a a much more um explanatory level and we encourage along the way that if you have questions, feel free to drop me a uh email. Uh, the city manager, the fire chief have my email. Uh, we also have uh Matt Zabatsky, who's our EMS expert. He's actually uh the president of the National EMT Association this year. He's more than willing to provide any any input you might have. Uh, one of the things that we like to look at is that this report doesn't just go back, sit on a shelf, but rather becomes part of your organization's uh strategic plan, as I mentioned earlier. And as part of that, we're here as a resource for you going forward. Doesn't cost anymore, we are going to send a bill for, you called us, we're going to have to bill you uh like an attorney fee would come in. Hopefully there's no attorney fees or attorneys uh listening right now, other than the city attorney. But you know, that's part of our service that we provide those resources to you that as things move forward and those questions come up, we're here for your your assistance. I'll turn it back to Dennis for the mayor, I'm not sure who gets it after I finish here.
I'll take I'll take that, if you could just drop the screen share for us, that would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I just chief, anything you'd like to add?
No, I I certainly think um Thomas has summed this up, but uh, you know, one of our main things is really the the engagement of the staff during this whole process. I mean, we've had some uh previous conversations prior or just prior to this uh meeting tonight um about engagement with the association with about engagement with the members. Um, and that, you know, utilizing this study as uh a springboard for us to really makes a meaningful change, but change that's actually driven by the department, by the community. Um, you know, not just internally, but our external partners as well during this whole process. So um, you know, developing that strategic plan, I think is is hugely important and having the voices to be able to do so. Um, you know, which in turn will will allow us to um identify gaps, identify service pieces. And and where do we want to go as the city of Lewiston Fire Department? And um, you know, what's going to be our direction, you know, from from the board down? Um, it it's going to be a very helpful um helpful tool for us to to do such things.
Good, thanks. Uh, Dennis, anything you want to add?
I'm just in the interest of time and wanting to give time to the council, I won't add much more. I think the chief and uh Tom have done a nice job, um just add that emphasis. Uh, I do look forward to the process with the staff and 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 all of our partners throughout the city. Um, I think this is a positive step forward or can be a positive step forward in uh in helping us move the department forward.
All right, and do we know have have all firefighters been provided a copy of this report?
I don't.
How um, to sorry, sir. So tonight, um a- after this meeting or tomorrow morning, it will be posted to all um to our web server um for the situation. And then I'll be individually going to each station, each shift, each company to um have a conversation about this, about the study with every or every member I can get to. Um, that's on vacation starting tomorrow.
All right, good, thank you. Uh, so I see a couple of raised hands, Councilor Khalid.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I do believe the counselor Ray was first.
Oh, okay.
Um, so if if this chief, if the staff were um were interviewed, I'm wondering what was the most need that that were identified among them? Well, what do they identify as they wanted to change?
Tom, do you want to, I mean, kind of of how you did that with the with the staff or?
Sure, sure. What if we saw almost uh, it was almost a three uh layer approach to the department, your younger folks wanted more involvement, they wanted their recent uh voices heard, they wanted to provide more training, more education, get more involved. You had a second layer in the middle of of employees that kind of were strata uh had had a foot in the younger and a foot in the older, that they were looking for the the older folks to retire, that they could move up, uh that they wanted to see some change. And then you had the uh older uh kind of the older third of the department that were content with just how things had traditionally been done and it should be locked in that uh way and should never change. That should be uh that everything was just fine the way it was. And so it it was, it was almost like there are three departments in one. Uh, and there was a a great deal of frustration at the younger level because they didn't feel like they had that opportunity uh to move up or or make that that uh greater contribution of the organization. And so I think that was uh and it really all evolved back to what's going to be the style and what's going to be the philosophy of the city going forward? Is it going to continue to embrace that uh industrial model, which was interesting, the older uh generation and the the employees with the most years of service, like that industrial model, that everything is very rigid, that the chief at the top and he doesn't interact with anybody at the bottom. And then anybody at that bottom layer doesn't react react with the chief, that it's gotta go up that chain of command and down that chain of command and shouldn't bear it all. And then in that middle layer, you had some people that said, well, you know, that would probably work better if we could kind of develop more committees, more involvement that way. And then you had the younger folks that just wanted to kind of say, hey, everything needs to be changed here. We need to to, you know, have more involvement and we want that. Uh, so it was a real interesting um series of interviews, but that was kind of the gist of where the organization. And it wasn't just in firefighting, it was across the board from communication, from using train, you know, internet, from EMS, all of those different layers, they all kind of fell in those three groups and and those three uh kind of strata.
Thank you. Um, one more question. So thirty seven recommendations is quite a lot, but I'm so I'm wondering, Dennis, is there going to be an opportunity to prioritize this, especially concerning budget?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's a big portion of the uh the chief's work in in developing a um strategic plan and implementation plan. I think that that lends to a prior prioritizing needs as he's as he works with the staff and the department, setting goals and objectives through this process and where the, as he said, that where the department is headed. I think that's going to, that work and that that process is going to uh help identify the highest priorities uh for us as we in in the most, the highest priority needs um to see the success of the plan implementation. So I think that you will see that come forward uh through that process.
Okay, thank you. Just um lastly, is what what is the timeline, timeline um like for that?
Sure, I I expect uh the chief to to spend uh the, you know, the next uh, you know, immediate few months here ahead of us here um and and come back to you as a council. March and uh April are going to be consumed pretty much uh through your budget process, our budget process. Um, you know, with a lot of this, so I expect towards the end of April, you know, May timeframe, um, we should be coming back um with this process or with the with the at least a draft uh plan and looking for additional feedback and conversation with the council. All right, thank you. Uh, so I I just want to respond to uh Councilor Khalid's question, Tom. I uh, your response about the younger men looking for change, the middle area kind of goes both ways, but still wanting change. Uh, that's very encouraging to hear. Uh, so I just want to share that, Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and forgive me for being a bit tardy to tonight's workshop, but um I caught most of it thankfully. Um, nice to see you again, Thomas. Uh, last time we saw each other was in person and at the beginning of February, which just feels like eons ago. Um, but I just wanted to, i- if other counselors didn't have a chance to participate in this process, um I hope they did. But um it was, it was a really open process, I think we sat down and the question is, what do you think? And and what do you know? Um, and you know, Chief Stockdale and I had done um a good portion of a day together uh prior to that. So that was helpful in informing my understanding of the roles. Um, I think just a couple of clarifying questions, and I'm sorry if they're in the report, there's a lot of words in these hundred and fifty pages. So sorry if I missed this. So chief, um, you will, is it true you only have one vacant position, it's a lieutenant, is that right?
No, currently I I think, well, one vacant position, yes, but we promoted into those spots. Um, so. So, you know, kind of how the position runs is as you promote into it, it kind of the last one ends up getting. You know, at the time of writing, that was the case because we didn't complete the promotional process at that point.
Okay. So what are the vacancies you have in your department now?
Currently there's an inspector and that was that third inspector and one firefighter position.
And then this just popped into my head, but because we just finished the county budget process as well. Is emergency management agency staying with you all when central fire station is redone?
Well, those are discussions. We started, I know Dennis and I, when he was deputy city manager, started some discussions with the county about this. So ultimately the, the short answer is we don't know what they're going to do. And there's going to be quite a bit of conversations in the interim about, because I think that's also part of this study is, is it'll expand, expand out into that service as well. You know, are we getting that service from the county needed or, or not? And what do we want that to look like? And that's part, part of our department planning to be able to, to understand what that is. So, and you know, where they're going to go. They're, they're kind of, yeah, I really don't know what they're doing, to be quite honest with you. It's just kind of a, you know.
Yeah, I don't think Counselor Pat and Gill, or I heard a clear plan about that from the county this year. So maybe in the future. And then the last thing that kind of like raised a flag was the response time through dispatch being possibly too slow or could use improvement. Is that, so those are our employees. So how do we work on that? Who do we work with?
Well, so that, that'll actually be part of the plan as well with Director Leclerc. And there are some other, other reasons that lend to this. It's, it's, it's for us to really figure out in this plan to figure out why and where we want to go with it. You know, they follow, they do follow some specific protocols and some other things. So it's really identifying where our gap is and how we can improve that gap and, and still meet all the other requirements to, you know, Kalia for the PD and all these other pieces. And they have quite a bit of staffing issues as well, which would lend to a lot of these problems. And those are not necessarily fire department control. You know, so I think that's going to be something in conjunction with two cities is going to have to be, be looked at as well.
Okay. Great. I'll let other folks ask their questions. Thank you.
So I'm watching for hands to raise, but I just, I want, I want to acknowledge that the one thing that caught me in this report is bringing our fire department into the 21st century. But I think, you know, I think that should be a goal of city administration, the council and the fire department. But I do want to acknowledge when it comes to fighting fires in the City of Lewiston, we probably have some of the best firefighters in the state. But that's never an excuse to keep it the same old way all the time. So, but we do have to acknowledge they have some tenement buildings in the city that are kind of tinder blocks. And they just have a long history of charging in and protecting life and being very aggressive in firefighting. So I really want to acknowledge that. Chief, I noticed in the report, I mean, we're, we're pretty much an all white fire department. I think when it breaks down to women and male firefighters, is that going to be part of your strategic plan? I know the Lewiston Police Department has done work over the years to try to diversify. It's very challenging to do. It's not an easy thing to do. But are you going to have that within your strategic plan as well?
Yes, absolutely. And we started this, well, two and somewhat years ago with Ed, talking about ways we can potentially recruitment and retention. There are without question, many citizens in the Lewiston area that don't necessarily have the opportunity to work for the fire department as, as others, as there should be. So we're trying to really figure out the best way to go about that. You know, what types of programs can we have? How, how can we, you know, recruit the, you know, a good amount of female minority? It doesn't really matter. We want a good representation of the city. So coming up with a plan to do so is certainly part of that strategic planning process for, for our attention. Because not only do we want to recruit the best employees, we want to keep them, right? So we need to make it a place that the best talent wants to be. And, you know, that, that ultimately is the goal, one of the long-term goals for us.
All right. Good. Thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge the depth of this report. There are a lot of items in here that I can see that would bear on the surface provision for the City of Lewiston. A number of years ago, in fact, in the last century, when I assumed command of fire and EMS operations in a certain capital city, I was told by one of my chief officers that you got to slow down. Don't you realize that the modern fire service is nothing more than 200 years of tradition unimpeded by progress? And unfortunately, that seems to be the way. I'm glad to hear that through the interview process, we have, sounds like almost two thirds of the department that's willing to envelop some change, which is going to make it much easier. It's organizational dynamics being what they are, change never comes easy. But I think there are enough people involved with this that recognize that some change needs to come, that perhaps we can facilitate it. I have a lot of faith in Chief Stockdale. I'm sure that he's got his work cut out for him over the next three or four months. But I'll be interested to see what he comes up with for a final plan. But I do think we've got the basis for it here. I do think the council needs to discuss certain items a little bit further before we, we go too much further down the road. But I am basically happy with the report in and of itself. And, you know, I, I just think maybe we have the springboard that is needed now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Counselor LaJoy?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll echo what Counselor Clement just said. I, I think it was time for that report to come out. As a matter of fact, it should have come out 14 years ago. And, and reason being is that we strived a lot in those years to bring the department to a modern department. We stress fire prevention in comparison to extinguishing the fire. Some of the firefighters had the old way of thinking that we work on extinguishment. Why do we have a job to put out fires? But that wasn't the point. So my discussions, I guess, and my questions are going to be helpful later as we discuss this further. I'm somewhat disappointed as to where the department is today from where it was when I left in 2006. But that's neither here or there. I'll, I'll be ready to discuss it with the individuals involved at the time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, Thomas, thank you very much for attending this meeting and thank you for the report. And I'm sure we will, I'm sure staff will utilize the services that you offered for free. So I'm just taking note of that.
Always got to write that down, don't we?
Yes, we do. I think several of us wrote that down. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Have a good holidays.
All right. Okay. We'll move into the seven o'clock regular meeting. I just want to remind the public that any public comments can be submitted to publiccomment@lewistonmaine.gov prior to or during this meeting, and those will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public who are logged into the meeting can make a comment when invited to do so by raising their hand button in the lower center of their screen. With that said, Madam Clark, if you could call the roll for attendance.
Sure. Counselor from word one.
Present.
Word two.
Here.
Word three.
Present.
Word four.
Present.
Word five.
Present.
Word six.
Present.
And word seven.
Present.
Thank you. Also present this evening, Mr. Mayor, is the city administrator Dennis Jote, deputy city administrator Dennis Dale Doughty, finance director Heather Hunter, and myself as the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Any update on city actions in reference to COVID?
Just a few. We continue to work through split shifts, trying to isolate staff to protect both the public and our ability to continue to respond and keep our level of service high. So that continues. We'll make, we'll be making some minor tweaks, although I think we've set ourselves up with face masks in public spaces that are, that's very compliant with the governor's new adjustments to the face, to the face covering order. So I think we have some, just some minor adjustments to make, but I think we're in really good shape that way. And then finally, just an update on the police department. We ended up with 16 positives. Many of those are, are back to work or coming back to work currently. And we have two offices out waiting tasks. But much like the fire department, once we were able to understand how COVID had come into the department and where it was, in which positive tests, the chief, both chiefs were able to respond quickly, isolate people and really cut down on the, on the, on the expansion or continued spread. So I think we're in good shape and good shape throughout the city.
Thank you. Counselor Khalid.
I have a quick question. Dale, do you, do we know anything about the vaccine?
I'm, I'm not up to date on that. I think probably right now, probably Chief, Chief O'Malley would be the best person to talk to because it's really focused on healthcare workers and first responders. And I know he's been having discussions with the state. So beyond that, I don't know if Dennis knows any more about it than that little bit.
I, I don't think I could add much more. I do know that that is where the focus in terms of deploying the vaccine at this point. We are awaiting more updates and I think the best I can tell you is as we get updates, we'll, we'll begin to share those with the city council because I think we'll need to, to keep you up to date on that as it, as it evolves. It should evolve pretty quickly as in the coming days and weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Khalid? Okay. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted for the benefit of the public to, because all counselors saw this. Dennis forwarded an email that the mayor and I received from a citizen who was reaching out about, sorry, I'm reading this because I can't remember all the details, about officers who, who were wearing masks at the time. And the chief was incredibly responsive and it went through the supervisor. So if folks who are watching do have concerns about any city staff, just reaching out to the city administration, Dale and Dennis, the mayor, any of us, we'll get the information to the right folks so that we can make sure we're all following the rules.
Okay. Thank you. And Dale, any, have we had cases in any other departments other than, I know PW, a little at the fire department and the police department. Have there been any other issues with?
The only, the only other positives that we've had in the workplace, people may have at home. We've had a few cases where someone at home, but due to quarantine, we haven't. Either we don't know they were positive or not, but there were two other cases, both in public works. And again, we reacted, once we knew about those, we reacted very quickly, isolated people that came in close contact and really kept it at those two. And those two weren't related. They were two separate incidents. So once we know, we're able to respond. We were in constant contact. We have an epidemiologist who's partnered with us at the CDC and she is incredibly helpful as, as we start to respond. Anytime it comes up, I probably talked to her. In fact, I talked to her twice today. So.
Good. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 1st, 2020. Okay. Moved by Counselor Jelineus, and I really have no idea who gave a second. There were so many. So let me have one more. I just need a second because everybody came in at the same time. Okay. Thank you. So moved by Counselor Jelineus, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And if there are no concerns with the minutes, call the roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
And word one.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you. We're in public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding any issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. And I have one hand raised. Ms. Parity, if we can bring her in. And she's in there. So once she unmutes, you're all set to go. Good evening.
Good evening. I came to talk about the Public Health Committee and we've been talking about the homeless situation. And I thought we were going to have that on the agenda tonight from what Dale had said the other day, and I'm not sure. But I really want to talk, I really want to get together with the city council and talk about the homeless situation in Lewiston and partnering up with people in the community and resources that I don't think the city knows about. I just found out about a resource from our church, the church I belong to this past weekend that's getting a van for shower, for showers and bathrooms. And they are going to get this van by, they're looking at May. And Tim Galant is involved with this. He's on the planning board. And our church at the vineyard has been working on this van and they want to do something with the homeless. And I don't know if the city really has been contacting people doing this. Another thing I found out is that the city bus, and this is what I'm hoping the city council will work on, is that we get a link. So the city bus will go out to places like the path out of Lisbon Street where Pathways Vineyard is. They serve community meals on Friday, but there's no buses that go out to this area. You know, and it's for anybody to get, to get these meals. And they have served over 10,000 meals since the COVID has begun. So I'm wondering how much the city is connecting to partners in this. And I would like a real discussion on this at city council meeting. Thank you for listening to me and we're working with Public Health Committee on this.
All right. Thank you, Ronnie. Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you, Ronnie. Well, I just come in a couple of quick responses. This will be an update at the end of this meeting during the updates portion.
Okay.
Item, item number seven, that we will provide an update on all the work Dale has been leading that involves the Public Health Committee, Housing Committee recommendations. And so you're, you're, we will have a quick update on that. Just to quickly reference the Vineyard Church, yes, we have engaged with them. We've had some discussions. We are aware of the program that, you know, with the public shower and bathroom that you're, mobile public shower and bathroom that you're referring to. And that's just all part of, I think it'll be incorporated a little bit into the discussion or update, excuse me, from Dale and the work that him and the staff and various committees have been working on. So it is coming. It's, it's on the agenda. It's just not identified. It's, it's again, it's in our reports and updates section.
Okay. I'll listen and thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other hands raised, we'll move Madam Clark, if you just, the roll call votes.
Sure. Sure. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Two.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number one.
Item number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Cowbell Grill and Tap, 49 Lisbon Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Cowbell Grill and Tap, 49 Lisbon Street.
Okay. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor LaJoy, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay. Seeing no public comments, I'll close the public hearing and call the roll, please.
Sure. Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word. Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, Public Hearing and Final Passage, amend the Land Use Code and MAP to amend the existing conditional zoning of Neighborhood Conservation B at 299 River Road by increasing the allowable office space from 5,000 square feet to 25,000 square feet. Requested action to approve final passage to amend the Land Use Code and MAP at the property located at 299 River Road by amending the conditional zoning of Neighborhood Conservation B to increase the allowable office space from 5,000 square feet to 25,000 square feet.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I have moved by, so can we get a motion on the table first, Counselor Clement? Or do you, is there some?
I move, I move for passage.
Okay, so we have a motion offered by Counselor Khalid. I just need a second. Will you second that, Counselor Clement?
Oh, second. I wasn't aware that the first had been made. I'll second.
All right, good. Thank you. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Oh, and actually, let me just very quickly, Dave, if you could just give it a, a thirty second. I know we've already had this presented to the council, but if you could just give a quick, quick update on that.
Sure. This is an amendment to an existing contract rezoning for Iron House business at 299 River Road. The original contract rezoning limited the square footage that the business could expand to. This contract rezoning will allow for an expansion of the square footage. The cap on the square footage is put in place in part because of the residential uses in that area, even though it's an industrial zone. It's, it's on a boundary of rural ag zone too, where there are residential uses out there. So that's the reason that the applicant in the board have put limitations on how big it can be. Mr. Langley is here, if there's any questions.
Good, thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Item number three, Amendment to the Policy Manual Regarding Personnel Policies and Earned Leave Time. Requested action to approve the amendment to the Policy Manual Regarding Personnel Policies and Earned Leave Time.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay. I was about ready to ask. So moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And Dale, you'll be presenting?
Sure. Last session, the legislature passed a bill that requires all employers who have ten employees, employees or more, for more than 120 days per year to, that all those employees must have a, a leave, an earned time leave. The City of Lewiston, mostly through contract, through individual contracts, through collective bargaining, or through its management agreements, is covered, have covered most of its employees and meets the law. Where we haven't, this new law, and then it goes into effect on January 1st, are temporary and part-time employees. They would now be included in earning some time. So the way the, the minimum standards of the law are, are for every forty hours worked throughout the year, an employee would earn one hour of earned time. That earned time is combined, similar to combined sick time or vacation time. They can earn up to a maximum accrual of forty hours. They can use that time for emergencies once they've been employed for 120 days. That maximum of forty can go, can be carried over from one year to another if that employment continues within a year. A couple of things that we've done here to make it consistent with others that are not necessarily, necessary under the law, is that we are, we are including a payout provision, or at least we're recommending a payout provision up to those forty hours should an employee, and remember, these are part-time employees, the library are part-time employees at public work. So really getting to that maximum isn't going to occur very often. But when they leave employment with us, we're suggesting that we, that we pay them out at some, at, at their current pay rate, up to that maximum of forty. That's not required by the law. So that's something we could definitely talk about here. The other, the law requires that you allow them to use their time and eloquence of an hour at a, at a minimum. We're allowing them, like other employees, to use them in an eloquent of fifteen minutes. So an employee is forty-five minutes late because, or, and scheduled late because he's meeting a contractor for a furnace or something, we would charge them for forty-five minutes, not, not a full hour. That's another place we could, we could change. We're exceeding the minimum of the law. Employees can, can use time for, for illness or other emergencies. They can also, the law requires a minimum of four-week notification if you're using it for something like a vacation or a day off. We've cut that in half here and said we'd like to have two weeks' notice, not four weeks for scheduled time off. So there's a couple of places where being a little bit more generous than the minimum of the law. I think that's pretty much the basis.
We have an understanding of what the budget impact will be on this unfunded mandate.
I don't know if Heather has one. Hopefully she does, because I don't.
If you don't have it right here this evening.
Yeah, we should, we, one of the difficulty, we, we should get one. But one of the difficulties is how employees will use them. A lot of these employees are not with us the whole 120 days, like Public Works employees. The library does have some long-term employees. So I think part of it, we, we can come up with a number, but it's going to be really dependent on employee behavior. And it's not a typical employee, not, not the employee that we often have. So we'll, we can take an estimate of that.
Heather, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I, I would only add that you potentially have two different ways of putting it in back to back. One, in paying them for time that they've taken that normally we wouldn't have been paid. The second component would be the, the payout provision upon termination with the city, the forty hours. So both of those would have an impact. At this juncture, we don't have any kind of data or history to really know what the usage and what the accumulation would be. So to look at a budget amount, it would be purely, purely, purely speculative and, and, and not necessarily based on evidence or reliable data.
All right, good. Thank you. I really just wanted to squeeze in the words unfunded mandate, but I appreciate the response. Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I understand this policy change in response to the bill. And I suspect it would mean that contracted employees are exempt from this. This is really just for your salaried and hourly employees. Is that correct?
Yes, we've, we've looked at, they, they are, and they, they are, and aren't in the law. Our employees are because they earn enough time. But other employers, if they not, not meeting the minimum standards, the next time they renegotiate their contract, there's actually a provision in the law where they can carry forward with their existing contract, but once they renegotiate it. But I, I don't believe there's anything in the law that would require us to change our contracts as exist today. We give enough time.
Okay. And then the second thing really quick is I, I think I might have misunderstood when you were talking about some increased flexibility in terms of, you know, folks just taking a portion or whatever. I, and I wonder if, if DOL allows for, you know, employers to allow employees to take time like that, especially if they're, they're exempt, especially if they're salaried employees. So in other words, you know, are, are we allowed under the DOL to say, yeah, you can just take an hour PTO, you could take fifteen minutes? Or if someone is salaried, it's not, doesn't work that way?
Yeah, none of these are salary. These would be hourly employees.
Oh, okay.
And, and they are, and those are minimums. So the, the minimum eloquent of one hour that we're making it consistent with our other employees is fifteen minutes. We, we're allowed to as long as we meet that minimum standard. I think what DOL doesn't want you to do is an employee's fifteen minutes late, you dock them for eight hours, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right.
You know, the notification, I think they just gave some employers some cover by saying, you know, you got to give four weeks' notification of land leave. That's, that seemed, especially with part-time employees, that seems onerous. So that's why we went with two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it's not covered under here, but I was just curious, is there, these employees would be at will, but is there a suggested separation notice time? I, I just think to my own employee handbook, request four weeks if possible, just so we can plan for when we do have to pay out the accrued time.
I think our standard, like many, except for some of the executives, is, you know, two weeks' notice, you know, with those, with those that have individual contracts, like Dennis and I, you know, it minds thirty days. But, but I think our standard is typically two weeks to be in good standing.
Okay.
And a lot of them were terminating them or not terminating, but separating because it's the end of a cycle, you know, at, at Public Works, which is different at the Public Library. And then there's some policies there we need to look at in the future. We'll be back about long-term. There are people that are there for a very long period of time, but not working very frequently. And that creates some problems for Heather and some other problems. So we need to take a look at some of those.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dale, I'm wondering, have other municipalities taken this amendment as well?
They're all required to. They all have, we all have to have a policy on January 1st in place and start accruing that over time. So I'm assuming they all have. I know on the listservs, HR listserv, they've been, there's quite a bit of buzz around it, as you might have guessed. So whether they've all taken action or not, I don't know, but I know they're all talking about taking action.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pat, go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one, one question, one comment. I, I wanted to say I really appreciated the mayor's commentary on this subject. Thank you. And then for Dale, having, if I heard it correctly, you were talking about having employees take this in increments of fifteen minutes. I don't know the timekeeping system for the, the city, but I, I just want to make sure that that's feasible to be tracked or done that way. Just because wages and hourly things of that nature can get really sticky if it's done incorrectly for any reason.
So, and Heather may want to chime in, but we've, Heather Terrio has worked with Ralph and Heather's office to ensure that one, we can accrue these hours and do them efficiently. One of the things that says in the policy is we'll accrue them quarterly. We're actually going to accrue them as time work. That's the way our system works. So we're going to meet the minimum standard of quarterly. And the same thing with usage. Unless we misunderstood something, I believe Heather and Ralph have worked through to make sure this aligns with how our system works. So Heather's, is that accurate? I presume that is.
The fifteen-minute increment works fine. We're still working with the system to make sure it will accumulate as prescribed in the policy.
Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? And back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Your counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number four, please.
Item number four, Resolve Authorizing Reallocation of $16,485 From the Library Carpeting Replacement Project to the Library Roof Restoration Project. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the transfer of $16,485 From the Library Carpeting Replacement Project to fund the shortfall on the Library Roof Restoration Project.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Khalid. And I'll turn it over to Dennis.
Evening, Mayor City Councilors. I just wanted to take a brief moment to formally introduce our new Public Works Director, Mary Ann Brenchick. This is actually the first time that she's going to present to you as a City Council, and just wanted to make sure we took a, a, a moment just to introduce her. Mary Ann's been with the, the city coming up on three months now, brings a wealth of, of knowledge and experience, over sixteen years in municipal leadership, variety of public works and some nonprofit work, you know, related to environmental stewardship. Mary Ann's been a, a great addition so far to our, our management team. And I just wanted, like I said, to take that moment to do a formal introduction and say, Mary Ann, take it away on this item.
Thank you, Dennis. Our item tonight is a brief overview is the library roof. And I was there visiting today. It is leaking as we speak. So this roof has had problems for a while. And the original bid was going to just coat the top of the roof and not replace it. So when I went out to bid this late fall, the bidders decided and looked at the conditions that were up there and decided it needed to be a full membrane. So this is for forty percent of the roof, the whole area that is having problems, to be replaced with a membrane. So that's where the additional costs come in. And I know I, I talked with Marcella, who is also listening. If you have any questions for her or Louis, is that, you know, that will take the money from the carpet, but will still allow them to replace the entrance area in the stairs, which are the worst conditions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just for the council's information, this came before your Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee approved unanimously that this be recommended to the council for approval.
Very good, thank you. Mary Ann, do we expect any damage from the current leak? Any damage beyond the repair?
There, there, it is leaking on the floor up in Callahan Hall right now. I mean, they have tarps up there. So we really are ready to award that bid and move forward and get them up there on the roof, replacing that membrane.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, to the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. And the gender item number five, please.
Item number five, Order Taking Possession of the Following Properties and Authorizing That They Be Offered For Sale Through the Competitive Bid Process. Eight Anne Street, 35 Beechwood Avenue, 71 Brigham Street, One Carver Street, Nine Creep, Seeress Avenue, One James Avenue, 68 Jones Avenue, 47 Payne Street, and 120 Prospect Avenue. Requested action to approve the order directing staff to take possession of the following properties and offer them for sale through a competitive bid, through a competitive sealed bid process. Eight Anne Street, 35 Beechwood Avenue, 71 Brigham Street, One Carver Street, Nine Seeress Avenue, One James Avenue, 68 Jones Avenue, 47 Pine Payne Street, and 120 Prospect Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
It moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. And Heather? Do you want to add anything to that motion, Heather, or comments about that?
No, this is our annual meeting that we bring foreclosed property to the council afterwards, gone through the Planning Board and Financing Committee process to recover some of the outstanding taxes on.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, to the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, Authorization to Accept Transfer of Forfeiture Funds. Requested action that pursuant to Title 15, may by statutes annotated, Section 5824 Subsection 3 and Section 5822 Subsection 4A, the City Council hereby acknowledges and approves of the transfer of $2,856 or any portion thereof in the case of the State of Maine versus Chad Nick. or any portion thereof in the case of the state of Maine versus Chad Nichols and the transfer of nine hundred and nineteen dollars or any portion thereof in the case of the state of Maine versus Triva Wardwell being funds forfeited pursuant to the court process. It is further acknowledged that these funds shall be credited to the city of Lewiston Drug Enforcement Program account.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Joy. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public. Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. And reports and updates. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reporting from the school committee, we met last night for COVID update. At this point, McMahon Elementary School is remote through to the new year due to being designated as a COVID-nineteen outbreak site during the break in the meeting. Superintendent Lingless also fielded a call that noted that Connors Elementary School is an additional outbreak site, and so they will also be closed through to the new year. We're very hopeful that this trend does not continue, but I would be remiss if I didn't tell everyone to make their best attempt to mask up, wash their hands, and keep their distance.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports or updates? Okay, agenda item number eight.
Item number eight, any other city councils or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government.
Mayor, we do have the update on the the home list that I'd like.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
So the update, we just want to talk a little bit about what we what we've been doing, and we also just want to reaffirm that of the housing committee's recommendations that that we're focusing on, the ones that council had instructed us to, and we're kind of headed in the right direction. So I'll give a brief update, and I think we're just looking for affirmation that we're we're headed down the right path. We've a couple of things. We have a team that includes economic and community development, public work, at least our foot patrol officer from PD and code and planning and code, really getting together to kind of do a number of several-pronged approach. One is really to reach out to community partners like Trinity Community Concepts, the Pepperell Mill as a potential location for something in the future. And and as was mentioned earlier by Ronnie, the the Vineyard Church, we're also been reaching out to them and and working with them. Public Works is looking into short and long-term facilities for both restrooms and shower facilities, but also warming shelters and 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 a place to deliver services. So that's really kind of two categories that meld together. One is kind of sanitation facilities, and then the other one is is warming slash a location to be able to deliver daytime services, should those need to be placement and other things. So Public Works is looking at some short-term facilities, like where we could put the restrooms and code and planning are really, I mean, economic, community economic development, are looking for partners where we may be able to put in some short-term restroom restrooms, but then a series of longer-term things. We're looking at everything from the ability to find an existing facility that would partner with us to looking for temporary facilities, like temporary classrooms, that we might be able to do more medium to long term. A big portion of all of this is really trying to find partners. You know, the city's not really staffed to maintain these sorts of things and really doesn't have that skill set. So really searching for that for that right partner to be able to maintain both of these two categories. We're working with the the Health Committee, the Public Health Committee, as we develop recommendations and whether it's a facility or whether it's a location. And these two categories, really running that by the Public Health Committee to make sure we do no harm. Again, public health isn't isn't our expertise. We certainly don't want to build hygiene facilities that have have a downside somewhere else. So we're looking at those and working with that, as Ronnie mentioned earlier. They also had some good suggestions on other partners that we had contemplated earlier. So we're, those are on now on Link's list to reach out and see who's willing. So that's kind of a very brief overview. I think over the next few weeks, well, some of those will start to gel a little bit more. And I think the partnership part is probably going to be the most challenging, but that's, that's, that's the part we got, really got to work on.
Okay, thank you.
Headed in the right direction, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an observation. So the school committee now has a subcommittee on homeless student resources. And so Member Linnea Hawkins is the chair of that, and I believe Member Ron Poppen's on it too, and maybe someone else, but I can't think of a third name, just for kind of looping them in with some of those plans. And then, what was the second thing? Oh, the Ramada. Is that program through Community Concepts going well? I read something in the paper about it, but forgot to ask about it earlier.
I can, I, you know, I actually just had a conversation with Maine Housing just before the council meeting started, asking the very same question, just from our perspective. And as it was noted in the article, they asked me as well. We have not heard any, you know, no issues, no complaints have come forward from the community or, you know, any issues around there. My understanding is within, I believe it was forty-eight hours of them opening, they were at capacity, the twenty-eight-bed capacity. I I can also let you know that the that the representative from the the homeless shelter did come forward and make a request of our bus committee, excuse me, the L A T C committee, and we did, we were able to grant approval for some reduced cost bus passes to help with the with the clientele at the at the shelter to be able to get to different services and that. So from what I can gather and understand, I think things are going well. But, you know, and and we have not heard any concerns or issues since.
I think just one thing, if I could ask in advance, is, you know, there's an expiration date, I think, on that shelter as well. And so it might be helpful to do debrief, especially comparing calls for service, just knowing that was a majority of what I fielded over the summer, and I'm sure what the chief fielded for me. So that different location, I I felt when we were going through this process, was going to alleviate some of that, and it, the impression I get is that's happening. So having that data for overtime might be helpful as well.
Absolutely.
And do you think we could also add maybe a sixty-day update where we find out how many people have been placed into stable housing?
Yes, I can, I'll speak with the Community Concepts and and request a, I think that's a great idea to get a sixty-day update, very similar fashion to what we're doing now.
All right, thank you. Does any councilors have anything else in other city business? Okay, if not, the city administrator would like the council to consider a resolve. And Madam Clark, could you read that for us, please?
Sure. Resolve closure of municipal offices for the morning of Thursday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Whereas, under the personnel policy, city employees receive Christmas Eve Day, December twenty-fourth, as a partial holiday, closing at twelve noon. And whereas, federal government offices and many municipal offices in other communities are closed on December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. And whereas, this year has been very difficult and demanding on municipal operations, yet employees rose to the challenge of meeting the needs of the delivery of city services in unique and innovative ways during the pandemic. And whereas, the city administration and city council would like to send a positive message of appreciation and thanks to all city employees for their dedication and hard work this year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lewiston, that the city council hereby authorizes the closure of all municipal offices with non-essential services on Thursday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Joy. Dennis, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just, you know, quickly state, you know, there's probably not enough words to to really express our appreciation, I think, for the staff. Watching, watching this on the front lines as we went through all of this, the staff just stepped up in every single way possible. Some of the decisions we had to roll out at a moment's notice with information flying at us very quickly. They adjusted, they adapted, they accepted the information and were, and ultimately all delivered the the main goal, which is maintaining the services to our community to the best of our ability. And I'm just really proud of the employees overall, working beside all of them. And this is just a, you know, small request, you know, a gesture to say that thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Underwater, Mr. Mayor, would this not require a suspension of the rules vote before we can vote on it?
It would, actually, so thank you, sir.
In that case, I so moved that we suspend the rules and vote in that matter first.
All right, I'll need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Joy. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? Okay, if not, call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Clement, for calling that out. It was on my list to do, but so back to the original motion. You still have your hand raised, Counselor Clement, are you all set or?
Well, I didn't raise it, but I just don't want to see us get bit by doing something that defaults by technicality, that's all.
All right, thank you. And Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment to extend this day off to New Year's Eve as well. I think all the points that city administrator Dote just made are applicable through this whole holiday season. I have great benefits where I work and do have some time off for winter break, and I can, it's the only thing I'm looking forward to these days because there's not much else that we can schedule and and know will happen. And I think it does have a budgetary impact. I will be frank that I understand that. But, you know, the services and the level of service that have been provided by Lewiston City employees throughout this entire pandemic have been far none, just so exceptional. And so I'd really like us to honor that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for an amendment to the original, so we have to vote on that first, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Counselor Joy, is your, your hand is raised? Is that in reference to the now-on-the-table amendment?
No, no, it was, yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait till this one is over.
Okay, Counselor Jensen, is your hand raised for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thinking about it, I'd be okay with giving the city administrator the discretion to make that call, but us deciding it now, I wouldn't be in favor of it. It just doesn't fit, it doesn't align with how I would view us being stewards of taxpayer dollars. So I, I'm not going to support the amendment, but if they'd be willing to change it to give the city administrator the discretion himself to make that decision on the day, I'd be okay with that. I just don't think as a council, we should make the decision for that.
I, I disagree a little bit. I, I think it is the council's decision to make, and we shouldn't place the city administrator in a position to give the nod for a significant budgetary item. So I just, I want to share that. You know, I also want to share, you know, just my own personal opinion here. The offer for Christmas Eve, I think, is a reasonable offer. It's a great message to send to our employees. I think the next step is truly, you know, for me personally, I think that goes beyond judicial responsibility. I mean, we want to recognize the employees because it's been one of the most difficult years I've ever seen as an elected official. But I think we have a limit to how we spend taxpayer dollars in that way. So I just, I'll share that. I'll let the council make their own decision. Counselor Jensen, is your hand, a new, a new item that you want to discuss?
It's still related to the amendment. I do want to make clear for the the twenty-fourth, I'm okay with a full day. So, yeah, this is just regards to the thirty-first. Could the city administrator tell more about what the budgetary impact would be? And also, like, the, because I know, like, if there's a chance of snow or something like that happening, that would have an increased impact to, what's going to happen to the budget? Could you tell a little bit more about that?
Sure. You know, for the for the Christmas Eve holiday, it's, it's coming in approximately at a budget impact of about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars. For the, if we were to consider or look at the New Year's Eve holiday, that would have an impact of about forty-six thousand dollars, just shy of forty-seven thousand. The impact related to storms and that is, if it's a holiday, there is holiday pay, you know, with that. And if there, if a storm happens on that day, then obviously there's an increase with overtime and depending on the, you know, the timing of the storm and the nature of the storm and such, it just has a potential to increase those costs. It's unknown because it's unpredictable with the storm and and all that, but it does, it definitely would have an increased impact on that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if, in fact, this didn't pass hypothetically, the amendment piece, is the New Year's Eve holiday a blackout holiday, or are employees entitled to using PTO?
Would be entitled to use any of their their time as long as, you know, minimum staffing and those kind of requirements to be functional within a department are met. But yes, they would, if those, if there's no issues with that and there's enough people to carry operations for the day, then then they would be allowed to use that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments in reference to the amendment? Counselor Joy?
Yes, could you repeat the amendment, please?
The amendment is to add in December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, into the resolve, into the very last clause of the resolve. So the, so it would read, if passed, the closure for municipal offices with non-essential services on Thursday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, and Thursday, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've heard no language in there as to whether or not we'd be setting any type of precedent. I personally have no problem with Christmas Eve whatsoever. I'm starting to get some bad vibes about enlarging that at the present time. And I've heard nothing to indicate. I just don't want to set a precedent whereby every year, this, you know, it becomes something that is expected. Where do we go from there? Do we give them two days off before the holiday? I just, I think we've got to look at the impact this time of year, storms, that sort of thing. There is an unknown. We have time between, I guess, no, we don't have time between now and New Year's Eve. But I, as I said, Christmas Eve, I have no problem with. I think we want to look long and hard before they enlarge that, and I think we need to have something in there indicating this is not to be considered any type of a precedent-setting action. Thank you.
So I can respond to that. We did look at the language regarding this and with it, with it being very specific, with the specific dates included, as well as the whereas clauses identifying, you know, the nature, the reasoning for this being due to the pandemic and the reaction. We do feel that this is is really non-precedent setting based on this being so specific, we'll get the word out properly here, you know, for for that date and such. So I, we, that's, that's just our review and our take on it when we were looking at this again with the specific date or dates, and with the amendment being there. We believe we're not setting any precedent.
We might have to do it again if another pandemic hits, but let's hope that that won't happen for another hundred years. Counselor Joy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be prudent to put language in there that this is a one-time, one-time thing only?
I think the city administrator, I think the city administrator felt that there wasn't that need because because it was so specific to the pandemic response and, and then also the date specific. All right, any other questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, seeing none to the public, just to cover ourselves. Back to the council. If not, call the roll on the amendment, please.
Sure. Hang on, my pen just broke, sorry. Sure, hang on, my pen just broke, sorry. Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
No.
Word four is a no, Council Joy.
That's correct, no.
Thank you. Word five.
No.
Word six.
No.
Word seven.
No.
And word one.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion failed by a vote of three to four. So before you know it, Mr. Mayor, is the resolve in its original form.
All right, thank you, and that's for a half a day, December, on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public. Back to the council, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
And word one.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item nine.
Item number nine, executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the International Association of Firefighters. Local seven eighty-five, requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to M R S A Title One. Section four oh five sixty to discuss labor negotiations regarding the International Association of Firefighters local seven eighty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement. Hey, wait a second, Counselor from word one's supposed to do that. Moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Councilor Chalinas. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Words six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
And word one.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, does anybody need a break before we go into executive session? We have some nods, so let's plan on being there at eight o'clock, executive session. Thank you.